Good evening and welcome to the November 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Point of order for this evening, Commissioner Cantrell will be acting tonight, is that all commissioners are present. First up on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from October 19th, 2022. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of October 19th, 2022, as written to the record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up this evening is a resolution for ASDP 93338-2022. Presenting from staff this evening is Jasmine Forbes.
Good evening. So in the packet there is a memo from staff. And that memo noted that at the October 19th meeting, the planning commission had reopened the record until October 27th to allow the applicant to continue to work with staff on getting approval for the stormwater management plan. The applicant is still continuing to work with staff. And this evening, we are requesting that the planning commission defer final action until November 16th for ASDP-9338-2022.
Okay, and just for clarity, the commission's record is closed on that at this point, so it's just deferring our discussion and action?
But that's correct.
All right. Staff recommendation, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer until the time of, what day was that? I'm sorry, November 20th?
November 16th.
November 16th.
November 16th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That is deferred. Next up on our agenda is recommendations to Board of Appeals for BOA 9410-2022, a special exception for a private institution at 205 South Summit Avenue in the RA low-density residential zone. And Jasmine, this is you as well.
Yes. Good evening. This is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for a private education use. As shown on the screen, the property is located at 205 South Summit Avenue in the Zone RA Low Density Residential. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-1A8D, which require all petitions for special exceptions to be referred to the planning commission for recommendation. The applicant's requesting approval of a special exception for a name change and a student increase from 55 to 77 children for a private education use with a daycare. Pursuant to Section 24-25, subsection 7 of the zoning ordinance, private institutions require a special exception. Just a brief little history, on August 9th, 1990, the Board of Appeals granted special exception A-397 for YMCA accommodating 39 children. The special exception was later amended as special exception A-397A on July 8th, 1993, for a private education institution named Montgomery Primary Achievement Center with before and after daycare for 55 children ages 2 to 8. And this evening, I have Irene Coin from Sandy Rich Academy who's going to do the presentation this evening.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Jasmine. Yes, we come before you requesting exception that we are able to increase our enrollment to 77 students. We were approved for that space when the Episcopal Church of the Ascension, from whom we rent, gave us an additional classroom, which is shown on a diagram. So now we have five classrooms. I also submitted our MSD license, so they give you room capacities for each of these rooms, what the maximum number of children, based on square footage. And with that, we went for 55 children. The room that was added is Room 6, and that happens to be the largest room for 18 children. So with that, it went up to 77 students. We've never reached that number. The pandemic certainly had its effect on our whole nation and us as well. And so the most we have had since then is 31 students at the current time. But we would like to be in alignment with what we are prepared and ready to serve, and that is 77 students. It requires 10 staff based on state standards for ratio. We are requesting an additional two just in case, because we do have, all of our backgrounds are in special education, so we do take children with special needs, and that sometimes you might need additional staff person. So we just thought we would make that extended to the 12 in consideration for that. We, our operational hours are 7:30 to 6:00 PM. We're a 12-month program. During the school, our school year runs through September through June. We wanted to, in this community in particular, do a lot of outreach to families at all various income levels, so we've made a very concerted effort, along with Evelyn D., our co-director, to offer like a nine-to-one program, a nine-to-three program, extended care for families, so that we're kind of doing outreach to just the gamut of families and their needs within the community. And as a result, children coming to the program and leaving on a given day, there is a staggering of times as well too, which I can go into in further depth. The classrooms are shown, I think Jasmine included that, so you can see the rooms set up for the students. At the current time, the, we have all nursery school aged children. In the summer months, we run a program in July, from about July 4th to about August 20th, and then we can extend age groups up to elementary students if there's space for nurse, if all our nursery school spaces are, I'm sorry, if there's spaces after serving all the nursery school children. Again, past summers, before pandemic, we would work with Department of Health and Human Services because of our backgrounds in special ed, and do some outreach to the children with special needs, with the more severe disabilities who often cannot always be served in regular camps. So that, you're looking at the path leading down from Summit Avenue. This is the church's, I call it the east, it's the driveway to get to our lower level. So we're located in the back of the church's, it was called at one point the educational building, I'm not so sure, but it's their building that's connected to their church, and we rent space in the lower level. So this is the path leading down there, that we talked in our documentation submitted, that in that lower level, there are 13 parking spaces, and of which one is for people with disabilities, and then two we will set aside for staff, they're marked orange, and 10 will be for families dropping off and picking up. You can see a path, the blue path is taking you from Summit Avenue and showing that we, during these hours, there's really no other cars. The only cars really that travel on this road primarily are Gaithersburg High School. Their bell time is 8:40, oh, 7:45, the students would like that if it was 8:40, 7:45 to 2:30, and so there's just never been any, any conflict with times. They're pretty, they're out and gone by the time we are. We do have some families, before care families, arriving by 7:30 in the morning, but the 7:30, most of our families even drop off about eight, between eight and eight, eight and nine, not 7:30. We don't have that many working parents that get on the road that early. So we just showed the diagram so you could see how they would come in and come through the church. The green parking spaces are for church employees. It's within even our parent manual that we're not to use those spaces at all, they're respectfully used for the church. And I think maybe on a rare occasion, maybe somebody's pulled in there, maybe a visitor who just didn't even know where they were, but overall, I believe that's been honored. And then the church, as you saw within the documentation, is in full support of our request, and they have also always been very generous with, you know, if we had ever needed the Ascension parking lot, which isn't very often, I think it might have been for a graduation or something like that, we would be able to access it. So we have highlighted 40 additional spaces there, kind of left one over here, Jasmine, kind of empty, that's why it wasn't 41. And the 10 orange for staff there. I truly don't think we'll ever see 12 staff in the parking lot at one time, but it at least reflects one spot for each staff, which I understand is something that is considered for schools, I believe Jasmine told me. And the same thing with the 40 spaces, most likely never used because it's a pickup-drop-off system, but it really does build in, it was for every single family that would have to come in or out. Because Gaithersburg High School is right in line with us, you'll see a crosswalk that's highlighted in purples, so if parents would prefer to use the parking lot to park there and then walk across and walk their child down, if that would expedite their process of picking and dropping off, they have that as the option. And we would have a staff person up at the top giving indications of available space to move down, move out. And the other aerial views, I think, you can see the main entrances in pink, so that's our entrance that we use. There is another entrance there that's used more for emergency and fire drills, there's a, we have two more entrances, two more doorways in the lower level, but that's our primary entrance, in and out. Our parents do walk their children in. During the, as we came back from the pandemic, we had families just stop right at the main corridor, and we'd do temperature checks, and then we'd walk the children down to their cubbies, just to move things along and have parents go right outside. Now they're walking children in and helping them hang up their coats. The process again takes less than usually five minutes. And, but if anything, as we evolve, and it does reach this number, if we need to expedite the pickup and drop off, especially for the 9:00 AM, which would be the greater number, we would then just wait at the doorway and again help parents just bring the children from the doorway to the classroom. So there's ways to shave, shave time in the process. Did I answer everything? I know you've read everything, I just don't want to respect your time.
Any questions?
What is your current enrollment now?
31.
31. Do you ever, do you have a waiting list?
No, it's not a waiting list right now because it's 31 students. Yeah, so we have.
So there's potential, but there's not any imminent growth projected in the next six months, year?
I think, when, just before the pandemic, we were at 52 students, 53 students. We're unique in what we offer, because it is a school, a daycare is tend to offer longer hours and they're closed less often, so there is that component of being an educational institution that parents choose this because it is, but some parents cannot. So we just have to keep seeing how that will go, but we are approved for 77. We have the staff qualified for 77.
Okay. Do we, Greg, do we need to take comments from the public on this recommendation?
Yeah, I think we can open up for if you'd like for a recommendation.
For anyone who's joining us via Zoom, tech team, if you could go ahead and play that video, and this will be the same instructions for all of our items remaining on the agenda this evening, for anyone wishing to comment from home.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right. Is there anybody here in person or out, joining us virtually, who has commentary to provide on this application? Greg, anybody on the line?
There's nobody virtually with their hand up.
Okay. And if there's no other questions from, do you have a question?
The designated spot, the spots for the staff, you have 10 staff that you have already hired, are they designated in the lot, that those are parking spaces specifically for staff?
You mean with like staff parking?
Yeah.
No, because it's a shared space with the church. And in the past, we've been able to have a clear understanding of what's church space, like the aid spaces at the top. I strongly believe that the same thing would happen, but we could use cones or whatever during that, that brief 15 or 20-minute time.
Right. So when the parents come in, they know which spaces?
Yes, they would be.
Parked, parked appropriately, dropped the child off?
Yes, absolutely. We do a staff or a parent orientation upon arrival for every student, go through everything that we'd like them to support us with.
Okay, thank you.
Another question, Jasmine, is there a recommendation, please?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings and recommendations recommend approval of special exception, BOA-9410-2022, with the four conditions.
All right. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, and findings and recommendations, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the special exception, BOA 9410-2022, with the four conditions as listed in the record.
Second.
Moving in second, are there all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Nope. It approves 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Next up on our agenda this evening, takes us to the site plan portion of our agenda, AFP 9346-2022, modifications to a site and building and garage elevations at 9713 Washington Boulevard, Washingtonian Boulevard in the MXD Zone. Presenting tonight from staff is Carolyn Seig, and welcome.
This is an amendment to final site plan, AFP 9346-2022, for modifications to the site plan, building elevations and parking lot for Phase 2 of Washingtonian South Development. Property is located at 9713 Washingtonian Boulevard, and here is an aerial, just for orientation, this is an existing building, a 200,000-square-foot office building, which is 9711 Washingtonian Boulevard, I-270 to the north and east, the parking garage to the, also to the east, and veterinary hospital to the west, Crown Development, well, Crossfields Road here, and there is a hotel, Spring Hill Suites Hotel, to the north. The subject property is 7.39 acre lot, that currently has the one building on it, and if you will recall, in September, the planning commission approved amendment to schematic development plan, ASDP 9328-2022, which modified a condition of approval of the original SDP related to the expansion of the car, parking garage, and also granted a parking waiver to allow for a Phase 2 office building to be developed as a lab office building, rather than just an office building. So here tonight is the development team, Christopher Smith from Stonebridge Associates. I will turn it over to him.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn. Since we already went through all the refreshers, I'll kind of just jump right in. So currently in front of you is the current approved site plan, which included an identical eight-story office building sitting here, designated as 9713 Washingtonian Boulevard. As Carolyn mentioned, in December of last year, staff approved a minor site plan amendment to modify the architecture of this Phase 2 building to be suitable for laboratory, research and development use. It's included a reduction in the overall density from 200,000 square feet to 150,000 square feet, and a reduction in the number of stories. Furthermore, as noted, the amendment to the schematic development plan approved in September of this year established a new parking ratio for the laboratory and research and development use. This amendment to the final plan appeared consideration captures these two changes, as well as various other minor changes to the site plan to accommodate the new laboratory and research and development use. So in front of you now is a rendered, rendered image of the revised site plan. As you can see, these changes are primarily concentrated around the Phase 2 building, which sits here, the loading dock area, which is right here in between the two structures, and the parking area, which is behind the existing parking garage. The location of the buildings, the overall organization of the site has not changed. This presentation, I want to focus primarily on the most significant changes, again being the loading and the parking, additional parking behind the site, or behind the parking garage, excuse me. There you go. So on the left-hand side of the screen is what was currently, what's in the current approved plan, on the right-hand is the proposed provisions. So with the change of use in the Phase 2 building, the loading area has been enlarged and reconfigured to better accommodate the life science use. Additional loading bays have been added to the plan. My mouse is killing me, sorry. Additional loading bays have been added to the plan. Two dedicated loading bays are included here to service the new laboratory life science building, and then two additional bays are provided here to service the existing 9711 office structure. In addition, a secure lab gas storage area has been added to the plan for future tenant use, and with that additional lab gas area, the trash enclosure has been relocated here to the south side. Both the lab gas area and the trash enclosure are screened from public view, and in addition to that screening, we've also added additional screening on the north side here, which will be a CMU wall, and also a landscape screened area here to screen this loading area from just overall view from the site. So with the previously mentioned amendment to the schematic development plan and the new parking ratio established for the life science use, the planned parking expansion is no longer needed to serve, or sorry, to satisfy the parking demand on the site. The previous plan included a five-story expansion of the public, sorry, of the existing parking structure. All of the new required parking can be accommodated on a surface parking lot. So as you see here on the right, we are now proposing a surface parking lot, an expansion of the surface parking lot behind the existing parking structure where the structured parking was previously planned to occupy. To better screen this parking area, 18 new deciduous trees have been added to the plan to provide both shade and autumn color around the parking area. In addition to these trees, as you can see in the plan in front of you, there are existing holly, holly trees and cypress trees planted along this frontage to further screen the parking area from the I-270 ramp. So Stonebridge and our partner, Principal Real Estate and this project, are very excited about this opportunity to provide a life science, a purpose-built life science offering in the city. Very much appreciate staff support on this project, and thank you for your time and attention, and welcome any questions or comments you may have to our proposed amendment.
All right. Thank you very much for questions.
Number of cars considered for that flat parking lot, for the outdoor parking lot? How many, how many spots are you planning out?
It is 101.
101.
Correct.
Any consideration for solar panels to go over that, over that surface area?
It has been looked at. It would require significant infrastructure improvements to the, to the area. We've looked at it, we've talked at it, we're not planning to do that at this time.
Not planning to do that.
Correct.
It's a life science building, I thought it would be an interesting consideration to put in the plan, but, okay, that's, that's all right.
Could you walk us through briefly the M. dot easement issue?
Sure. Go to the rendered plan. So back in, I believe it's the 50s, when the, I guess the original property owner deeded portions of the property to facilitate construction of the I-270 ramp. This included both the roadway along this frontage and also the ramp as it comes around. There's what's called a, what's listed in the land records as a revertable slope easement, which basically cuts through the property here. Our understanding, and State Highway's understanding, is that that easement is no longer needed. Fortunately, State Highway and their planning for the planned expansion of the I-270, with the, I guess the new toll lanes coming down the road, they submitted their package to the Federal Highway Administration, which included that easement in their package. And so if they were to release the easement at this time, they would have to go back and reapply with the State Highway, or sorry, with the Federal Highway Administration and change their environmental impact study. And based on kind of where they are in that process, they've asked if they can wait on doing that until they have their contractor on board, their design-build contractor on board, which I believe they're pretty close to announcing, and that they've started proceeding through their design so that the design-build contractor can affirmatively state that, yes, this easement is not needed for the, for the future work planned on I-270. Included in the record is a letter that we received from State Highway. I'm not sure, Caroline, if you want to go into that, I think you have it sitting right there.
It's exhibit number 12. We had asked that the State Highway put something in the record indicating their, their plan to release the easement so that, at the time, so we, so we were more comfortable that this could go forward in the future. And then in addition to that, there, there is another exhibit in the record from the applicant with other possibilities, if for some reason they declined to release that and they wanted to go forward with their Phase 2, or they needed to go forward with Phase 2, that there are other locations on the property to put that parking, and they'd have to come in for an amendment to final plan to change the location of the parking lot.
But we have been very closely communicating our plans for development here with State Highway, specifically the, the op-lanes group who's managing the, the infrastructure improvement project down I-270. So they know full well what we're doing, and we're working very closely with them to make sure our timings are aligned.
Any other questions? My only question, can you talk a little bit about the infill that's planned for the parking garage? I saw some, you know, the commentary about it, the existing parking garage not being designed for spandrel panels, but looking at the elevations, I'm a little confused how all of the, the block and CMU buildup that's proposed is somehow less weight and easier.
Yeah, so it's less of a weight issue and more of just of how to attach the precast spandrel panels that are existing on the other facades of the garage. The, the vertical panels that are existing don't have pretty much the supports necessary, the connection points necessary to attach those panels. And so our proposed solution to that was to fill in the gaps, because right now it's kind of large, kind of openings. To fill it in, fill in the gaps with CMU to make it look as if it's a, it's a punched window type, type elevation, and then we would, you know, kind of skim that so that looks like precast painted, so it looks, it appears as like a finished, finished condition. But the structure as it's currently installed today cannot accommodate the precast spandrel panels that are elsewhere on the structure.
Okay.
Can you comment a little bit about the proposed lighting for the new surface lot? I know you have the photometric planners due later on, but any ideas of what the lighting's going to be like?
Yeah, so we're planning to utilize kind of the same kind of pole lights that are out there currently. We'll have to double-check what we have in the plan, I believe they're LED, but it's just whatever, you know, the existing lighting that's out there, we're planning to replicate that in the cervix expansion area.
Okay. Other questions? Caroline, do you want to give us what staff's recommendation is?
Sure. Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant AFP 9346-2022, and ENV 9352-2022, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city code, with three conditions that are included in your record.
Thank you. Before we move to discussion, is there anyone either here in person or virtually joining us this evening who would like to provide testimony on this application? Anyone?
Currently, no one has raised their hand. Oh, sorry, there's one, David Mullins.
All right. Do you want to let, tech team, can we bring David Mullins in?
He is unmuted.
Good evening, David, can you hear us?
Hey, yeah, good evening, just a super, super quick comment, and just on one thing I heard. With the solar panels thing that was thrown out, as just a member of the public and with think about this stuff going on, that seemed really like a, like a, oh, my little guy's saying hi, that seemed like something that'd be great, just as like aesthetically and a message to the public about the environment and the space that's being taken up, again, just because it's. Again, just because it was thrown out there, I thought that that really struck me as something that would be nice, especially because I heard in a, in a housing discussion recently about how a lot of the one and two bedroom kind of newer places are, are being built for the life sciences folks coming in. So again, if we can just send a message to the public, that seemed like a good one to send. Thanks for listening.
David, before you leave, could you please just give us your, your full name and either address or neighborhood for the record?
Absolutely, it's David Mullins, it's 935 Clopper Road, I'm at the Gateway Apartments here in Gavisburg.
All right, thank you very much.
No, thanks y'all.
Anyone else?
That is it.
All right, discussion, any concerns, things that?
I think this fills a void, another void, and our development is a high-tech corridor, and it's, it's a, it's a good place to, for the building to be, as well as I'm happy with the fact that there's a parking lot, they don't have to extend that garage, make it any larger than it is. So I'm, I'm happy with the way it looks.
Great project.
I think, you know, we've obviously been seeing this revised plan evolve through all the various stages, and I think this is very much in, in line with what we've all discussed previously. I would echo Lloyd and the caller's sentiment that, you know, I, I think we're at a point where anytime we see somebody putting surface lots in, it, it, the default should be some sort of solar, unless there's a reason not to, but obviously that's not a city requirement yet. We'll see if it will become one soon, so at this point, it's a strong suggestion and nothing, and nothing more.
Well, a lot more trees. Just to fill the void.
Yep. So that, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, the, the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP 9346-2022, and ENV 9352-2022, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Code, with the three conditions as written to the record.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Up next this evening on our agenda is Site Plan SP 9290-2022 for a new 604,000 square foot Novavax campus at 14 First Field Road in the MXD zone. Presenting tonight from staff is Samuel Copeland.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is a public hearing for Final Site Plan SP-9290-2022 and associated Final Forest Conservation Plan ENV-9289-2022 at 14 First Field Road. The subject properties, as shown on the screen here, are approximately 8.5 acres and are bounded by Bank Street to the north and First Field Road to the west. Primary access to the site is from First Field Road. The properties are currently improved with a surface parking lot, and the property is zoned mixed-use development, MXD. The applicant is requesting to construct a 604,929 square foot office campus for Novavax in accordance with the approved SDP. The uses include office, research and development, and integrated light manufacturing. While staff is supportive of the final site plan, staff has noted a couple of items that must be revised prior to the issuance of a permit. This includes revisions to the final site plan and final forest conservation plans to address minor staff comments, which include but are not limited to providing pedestrian-scale lighting for the interior green space areas, minor sidewalk cleanups, and some minor drafting errors. It is staff's opinion that these changes are minor enough that the plans can still be approved by Planning Commission, with the recommended condition of approval outlined in staff's analysis. Here tonight to introduce the application is Nancy Reglin with Schulman Rogers, Manoj Delia with KGD Architecture, Mike Goodman with VICA, and Tarek Kalaji with Novavax.
All right, will you put us on the screen?
All right.
Good evening. Nancy Reglin here on behalf of 14 First Field Holdings LLC, which is the Novavax affiliate, which is the owner of the property and the applicant. With me tonight, along with Tarek Kalaji, is Matt Harrigal, who's the Vice President of Novavax in charge of facilities and engineering, as well as reps from Jones Lang LaSalle, who's our project manager, KGD Architects, and VICA Engineering, and Oculus Landscape Architecture. And we're pleased to be presenting the final site plan for Block Two of the sketch plan, which is the campus for Novavax. So you're familiar with the site. Sam, Mr. Copeland just indicated where it's located. We are bounded by First Field Road, Bank Street, and Quince Orchard. We're in the First Field Employment and Technology Corridor, very close to NIST. There are two other blocks of the sketch plan, which are shown adjacent outside of the red outline, and these include, in the lower right-hand corner, the 700 Quince Orchard Building, which is now occupied by Novavax for office, R&amp;D, and manufacturing, as well as on the top right corner, that is the M&amp;T Bank and the office building at 1 and 5 Bank Street. So as I said, we're in the First Field Technology and Employment Corridor. We're in the midst of a lot of other technology companies and flex buildings that have a lot of interesting businesses in them. We're also in a convenient location for transportation. Not only does it have highway and interstate highway and local business road access, it has transit through bus, the Mark Station, the metro, and a future BRT right down Quince Orchard Road. So we're very pleased where we're located, we're walking distance to services and amenities at Quince Orchard, and then close to vehicle, to other services, shopping, and green spaces. So the site plan is consistent with the sketch plan, SK 8813 2021, which was approved. In that sketch plan, Block Two was approved for 604,929 square feet in multiple buildings for commercial use with up to seven stories, a parking structure, and a central green space. We're also consistent with the schematic development plan, which we've also seen, SDP 9003 2021, and this is Block Two. And again, we're 604,929 square feet in a mix of office, R&amp;D, and integrated light manufacturing, multiple buildings up to seven stories, and a parking structure where the parking ratio was approved at one space for every 650 square feet. A central green space, a circulation network, and an adopted set of design guidelines. Okay? So here we are, finally at the site plan. So tonight, when we, this Block Two has an FAR of 1.44, when it's built out, the overall site will be built to 1.22 FAR, which is within the total sketch plan of 1.5 FAR. It is the same mix of office, R&amp;D, and integrated light manufacturing. We are providing parking at one per 650 square feet. We are providing 1,171 parking spaces. Those are located in that independent parking structure, as well as two below-grade ladder levels below the north tower. An 1,171 is the parking ratio required for the new campus buildings, plus the 225 spaces that are on the surface parking lot right now, serving 700 Quince Orchard, which will be relocated into the parking structure in order to free up the site to do development. So this is the site plan, a refinement of the sketch plan and the SDP. While MXD only requires 25% green space, this site has three acres of green area, which is 36% of the site, and you can see that between the perimeter green space and the central green space. So I'd like to take a moment and look at some of the highlights of the site plan to sort of remind you where we're going, and then take you on a tour of what these buildings will look like from the public realm on First Field and Bank Street, and then what it will look like interior to the site. So as you can see on the site plan, the campus is proposed, is composed of a north tower, a south tower complex, which includes a manufacturing annex and an amenities annex, and a standalone parking garage. It also includes an interior street circulation system, which we have affectionately called Street A, B, and C for the last two and a half years, but after a context, a naming contest at Novavax, they came up with three names, which have been vetted through Park and Planning and the city themselves, and will be proposing these names. So the shared street, which is down the center of the campus, Innovation Way, the street between 700 Quince Orchard that leads to Bank Street, Supernova Place, and then Novavax Place that goes from Quince Orchard Road to First Field Road. So by A, B, and C. All right? Okay, so let's start at the north tower. The building massing, as you can see on the site plan, has been articulated, so it reads as three separate buildings. And that building will be connected to the south tower in the future through an above-grade pedestrian crosswalk. You can see that between the north and south tower. The north tower is also served by a loading dock on Bank Street, but you can see that it is recessed, so that it is not a prominent feature on Bank Street, and also provides an extended driveway to allow trucks to pull off of Bank Street before they get to the loading dock. The loading dock, because it goes right onto Bank Street, is, will be subject to a loading dock management plan, and we've provided that to the city. Basically, that includes an onsite loading dock manager who has to monitor and manage truck movements in and out of the loading dock so that it minimizes any impact on Bank Street. So next along Bank Street is the parking garage, and, you know, it was designed with the smallest face of the garage facing Bank Street to have the least amount of impact. It also, as you'll see when we get to the architecturals, there's an asymmetric stair tower, which is a feature architectural element, which is what actually engages Bank Street. If you look closely, you can see around the edge of, and I'll try to use this, the edge of the parking garage on the top level, there are these planted spaces. And you'll see this also in the architectural, that the top level of the parking garage has a planter edge to soften the top of the garage and provide for plantings to overflow. So as we move along Supernova Place off of Bank Street, you'll see there's a porch up there that only allows a right in and a right out, and you also see that there's two entrances to the parking garage. We use the change in elevation of the site, this was the stormwater pond, which was the lowest level. So the first closest entrance to Bank Street allows cars to enter in at a lower parking level, and the second entrance allows them to enter at the at-grade level, which puts them right at grade where the visitor center is, the bike room, et cetera. And also, if you'll, we'll be talking about the childcare center, it also allows them to be right at grade to walk over to the childcare center. Okay, so the south tower along First Field Road has similar massing, it's broken up into articulated as three different buildings. It's integrated with this amenities annex, which incorporates the central food service, educational, and meeting room space, and has an outdoor terrace where you see the words "amenity annex," and that allows for outdoor dining facing right onto the quad. The manufacturing annex is a three-story building, which is served by a loading dock on Novavax Place. It has outdoor space for building emergency generators and outdoor storage of lab compressed gases. Those are screened, but they are also confronting the flex buildings that are further down First Field that also have generators and these kinds of facilities back to back to this property. And the campus core is the quad, the green space, including the shared street, which is Innovation Way, a visitor's center and its plaza, as well as a centrally-located lobby to the parking garage. So let's start taking a look at the architecture. So this is First Field Road looking at Innovation Way. The north tower's to the left, the south terrace is to the right, you can see the pedestrian crosswalk connecting. The buildings are glass, they are high-performance, low-E glass, which is generally clear, maybe with a little bit of a, you know, green tint like glass does to it. And for solar screening and for security screening, the architect has designed these metal screens, and you've seen these before as we've come through. They are of biophilic pattern, which means that the sunlight that comes through will end up as dappled sunlight inside the corridors and the spaces right along the glass walls. All right. So the main entrance here is wide, and you can see that there's, the buildings are cantilevered over the first floor to give that pedestrian-level experience to be much wider and open. You can look right in from First Field Road, straight through to the visitor's center of the quad, and see 700 Quince Orchard beyond, okay, with the cantilevered buildings. All right? The, the design provides a lot of transparency for people in cars and pedestrians as they walk and pass on First Field Road. So as we move down First Field Road towards Bank Street, this is the corner. So again, the elevation has reduced, this is where the stormwater pond was. So instead of a five-story building as we saw up at Innovation Way, now we're seeing the full seven stories. We're seeing two stories, which are now white masonry, the four stories of the floors of the, you know, mixed use. And then you can see at the top that the top fifth floor of this office is actually set back in order to make interest and change the massing and scale of the, of the building. I want to point out, as we look at the flat elevation of this First Field, and we look at this masonry base, this is, you know, what a pedestrian experiences, the first 20 feet, and then they can sort of understand the first 50 feet of a building, so we're showing you this. So most of their experience of a pedestrian walking down First Field Road is looking into a transparent building. But on this corner, there is this white masonry, and I want to point out something that you're going to see throughout the project. These windows are a little strange, aren't they? They're variable in size and location. Well, what you'll see is, we're going to see this over and over again, this is an abstraction of a DNA sequence. So even though we've done it fairly literally on the garage, you're going to see this in the building elements throughout this project. Like, they've expressed this DNA sequency throughout the architecture. All right, so we move around the corner, this is Bank Street now, this is the pedestrian level, you can see the two-story base. There are doors here from the bike room in the garage and the egress from the childcare center. The childcare center is looking out over the pedestrian sidewalk, and then the glass building above. Again, you can start to see this sequence very clearly of these windows. Now, this is Bank Street, a full view of it. So on the right is the north tower. You will see that you don't really see the loading dock because it's been recessed, and then you see the parking garage. And here's what I was saying about the architectural element, which is this asymmetrical glass staircase. So that is what engages with the pedestrians on Bank Street. The garage is there and you can see it, but it's pushed back, it is the staircase, and at night, if you think about it when it's lit, it's going to be an interesting beacon, architectural feature for, for Bank Street. And here you can start to see on the garage, the precast is textured concrete, and that textured concrete has the DNA sequencing imprinted into the concrete. So I've sort of given you a little picture of a DNA sequencing has wide and small variable banners, and that's what we're going to see on, on that textured concrete. So the south tower is very similar to what we just saw in the north tower, broken up into three, with a base, middle, and top set back. And then as you go around into the project on Novavax And then as you go around into the project on NovaVAX Place, you can see that we're reintroducing the white masonry in the lower level of the South Tower. You see the recessed loading dock, which serves both the South Tower and the manufacturing annex. And then you can see that the manufacturing annex itself is basically a whole nother DNA sequencing. It's white masonry with these, punctuated with these windows in a DNA sequencing fashion. And as we wrap around into the site, onto Supernova Way, you can see the manufacturing annex. You can see the South Tower behind. And then in the middle here, you see a two-story glass amenities annex facing out onto the quad. All right, so we're finally at the quad. So this is basically in the quad, near the 700 Quince Orchard, looking across at the South Tower. So you can see the glass facade. You can see the cantilever at the first-floor level to widen out the pedestrians feeling of openness. And interestingly enough, I think there's a person on the roof of the fifth floor there looking in the corner on the rooftop. So a lot of experience on the south. You can see the north building beyond with some of the white screening. And then to your right of your screen is the two-story glass visitor's center, which means that they have eyes on the entire campus. Okay? And then behind it, if you remember from the site plan, I showed you the rim of the planting on the rooftop. Well, behind the visitor's center, it's actually terraced. Every floor is terraced down with plantings, and you can see how the plantings soften the garage from the interior of the quad as well, looking at it. Okay? So let's look at the quad in a little bit more detail. This central core has the central lawn, the shared street, which allows it to be expanded, the programming for gathering spaces, because it's all one level without curbs, to be expanded to include Innovation Way and the visitors' plaza. Okay? And I want to show you just, because when you look at this, you may not see some of these specific items, but you'll see it looks like there's a water feature here. And there is. There's a 93-foot-long linear water feature, and this is a reference photo because it hasn't been designed yet. It has to be designed by special water feature consultant. But this movement of water and the sound of water will enhance the experience of people in the quad. So now I'm going to focus you on Supernova Place. If you look at the sidewalk along the quad, you'll see there's all these alcove with benches. And NovaVAX particularly wanted to make sure that everyone, including their employees in 700 Quince Orchard, felt like they were all part of the campus. So this is a special area, very close to the entrance to 700 Quince Orchard, which allows their employees to come out, and they can, of course, use the quad and all the common facilities, but gives them a space to just outside their door, sit and have lunch, sit and watch what's happening in the quad, get a little bit of air. So it's a nice little extra feature to, to keep the campus as a cohesive mix. So Innovation Way is a shared street, and that typology in the city means that there's no curbs here, and it has specialty pavement. So it has a basket weave pavement for all the pedestrian spaces and the travel lanes, but they are divided by running bond to show cars and people where the travel lanes are. And then in addition, there are these little black dots. These are lighted bollards, which provide safety for these pedestrians, also are a clear delineation to the cars of where they're allowed to go. And as you can see, they're pushed back a little bit. If you look at the innovation part of this street name, you can see they're pushed back. This is a loading drop-off zone because the visitor's center is right across here. You've come on campus, you don't know where to go. You can stop here temporarily. You can either be dropped off, or you can run and get instructions from the visitor's center about where to go. Okay? So in addition to these little bollard lights, I want to point out to you, there are also larger black dots that have like a starburst around them. The lighting in, interior to the campus is a combination of the bollard lights, which are pedestrian-scale, only light the path, and these 14-foot-tall LED pole-top lights. So this is what's been chosen for that 14-foot pole light. It is a dark skylight, meaning no light goes up, all the light is directed down. It's a very simple, modern feature. But if you look at the second photo, you can see how it's used on a path. And you can see that it provides like a nice gentle light beyond the path. And one important crucial factor, it also lights the faces of the people walking along the path. And when you've got a campus that operates 24 hours a day, safety of your employees is key. And so the combination of using a bollard light, which lights a path, and these 14-foot tall pole lights with this gentle pool of light lets you see people, recognize them, and also gives you a little bit more spread of light in order to see what's in the landscaping on either side of the path. And then the final little is the typical bollard light. It has a light at the top, and, and those are used also as well. So the quad is the heart of the campus. It's the cog, all the spokes of all the buildings, everything comes out of it, social interaction of all the employees, lots of places to meet, sit, and enjoy nature. So I also just want to take a second and let you know that we're asking for a modification to the design guidelines. It's pretty minor. Part of the design guidelines is we came up with a comprehensive sign plan, and once we looked at the childcare center and where parents might, or grandparents or anybody might be parking in our garage and going to a dedicated door, we wanted to put some signage there. So if you look at the North Tower, there's two new pink triangles there for signage for the childcare center. So that's the modification to the design guidelines. All right, so we think that all of our submissions justify the necessary findings that you have to make to approve the site plan. It's consistent with the sketch plan, with the SDP. It meets all of the city codes, including the MXD zoning standards. There's no adverse impact. In fact, we think that this is going to be an enhancement to this neighborhood and corridor. It's compatible with the other uses around it, and it's taken a surface parking lot and a, past its prime, Stormwater Pond, and introducing up-to-date stormwater management and forest conservation. So we accept the conditions that the staff has set out, and we respectfully request approval of the application. All of our team members are here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderfully detailed and thorough presentation, so thank you for that. Questions from the commission?
I would second that. Thank you very much. It was a very good presentation and very thorough. My concern in previous hearings was the security within the campus, particularly Innovative Way now, as it's called. The bollards that you described don't sound like they're very robust, and I am concerned about cars because it is an open street.
Correct.
And it is accessed from First Field, that those bollards be substantial to stop a car should somebody want to invade the campus, particularly on, on the green. And I was wondering if you could describe or if you can enhance what those bollards really look like? Are they, are they robust enough to stop a car, or are they just lighting bollards?
I think it's, right now, they're just lighting bollards.
If you could actually come up to the microphone.
Yeah, my name is Manoj Delia. I'm, I'm the architect on the project. The nature of the movement of cars is along the street. And we, in the analysis that is, you know, we didn't really, it would have to really substantially turn in a different direction.
Right.
So the, at the moment, the, the bollards are designed to be just simply a light bollard.
Just markers.
That's all they are designed for. We, we designed, we designed secure facilities all, all over. You could potentially design it with, with an inside or piece that could resist that kind of force, which is about 2,000 pounds. But those are, that's a different consideration, so.
So we did submit this through NovaVAX's security team.
Yep.
And there's going to be a lot that you don't see.
Right.
On this site plan. So that may be something that they will ask for, is those bollards to be stronger. I know that we designed on the visitors' plaza side, a lot of planters in order to stop any, from that direction. And the bollards were designed in a certain distance apart from each other in order to stop cars from going that way, but I think, you know, it will be, have to be something they'll take into consideration, whether if there's an intentional act, whether they'll be sufficient.
There have been incidents, unfortunately, within the DMV area over the last 20, 30 years that have resulted in significant damage. And I just want to make that clear to, to your attention, that I think you should be prepared for that here, regardless of how wonderful, and I just think the campus is beautiful. I think it's a great concept. I just want to make sure that the employees and the, and the citizens are, are safe and secure.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I like the idea of the dappled sunlight coming through. Is that a solar-powered, is it generating electricity when you talk about?
No, it's a solar screen.
It's a screen.
So you want to talk about your metal screens that, on the glass, on the south sides?
Yeah, so the metal screen is, is, is an organic pattern found in, found in nature. So it seems much more friendly rather than something that is somewhat predictable and just cellular structure. So it does, it's not solar-powered, it's just a metal screen.
So there's no solar in, on the site generating electricity at all?
It is not.
All right. And then the, I like the idea of the parking garage having the, the plantings to, to kind of soften the facade. Is that considered a, a green roof, or is that just decorative and?
So we have not included it in the calculations for the green roof. It's basically vegetated space, and the plantings are really for landscaping.
Okay. And I had remembered from a past presentation that you made, is this, you'll get a LEED certification? Is that correct?
So this is the base buildings of the entire campus. The next stage is to do all of the programming. And once we do the, NovaVAX does the interior, they obviously have a bent as a life science company to attract the best talent from all over the world, and part of that is to have a fabulous campus that meets the people's expectations. So those decisions will be made at the next stage of where they'll go with sustainability. Right now, the building is, the base building is designed to your green buildings' performance standards. But where it will go from there, they haven't made those decisions, those will be made as they program these buildings.
And I also recall, someone had talked about, I know you had employees during COVID that were there, and then they were hybrid, and then they were remote, and so I, I think you've probably settled into knowing what your campus is going to look like in terms of the number of employees, the people that are going to be parking, the people that are going to drive.
Do you want to answer that?
You know where this is going.
Good evening. Matt Harrow, Vice President of Facilities and Engineering at NovaVAX. So yeah, I would love the world that we have settled into a new norm. We are not there yet. The designs that we've had through the pandemic with employees being hybrid or remote or onsite has changed. It's something we're still tracking. We, we still haven't come to a new norm yet, but we are continually monitoring how our, our ways of work, as we call them, how our employees interact at the facility, gathering that best talent, whether it be in California, working totally remote, and providing the best knowledge to NovaVAX, or if they are living in Montgomery County and commuting. But we're still deeply struggling with that program. And I know other facilities and buildings are as well, as they're trying to define what the new normal is for the personnel and to best meet their needs.
Seems to be a problem that everyone's having.
You were, you were fishing for the right answer, I know.
No, no, there is no right answer. That's, that's a problem.
There isn't. It's just, we're, we're, we're monitoring our program. We're, we're listening to our employees and, and find out the way of comfort, their safety, their security, and what best meets business need and that employee interface. It's going to be something that over the years, we will be continually monitoring and tracking to what that best fit is.
Well, again, this is a, your presentation has been wonderful, and this building is best-in-class, and I'm just, it's really terrific, so thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The proposed street that's named NovaVAX Place, are there any buildings along that street that are addressed to that street?
Only the manufacturing annex. We've worked out sort of a, an addressing concept with the city, and NovaVAX Place has one address on it, which is the loading dock for the manufacturing annex. 700 Quince Orchard is the building. It's based on Quince Orchard. It has its own address, the existing building. So for this, right, this street that goes from Quince Orchard to First Field, the only thing we're going to address is the loading dock for the manufacturing annex.
Okay. My personal concern with anytime we put a company's name on a street is mergers, acquisitions, change of ownership, change of names, you know, things that are not unheard of in the biotech field, and as long as we don't have multiple buildings and other, other people who have to be readdressed when we have to rename the street in 10 years.
Correct.
On the, on the sort of architecture and design side, probably the only thing in this entire presentation that gives me a little bit of pause and concern, and maybe you can talk through a couple of questions, is really two things. One, and they're all focused around the parking garage. Everywhere else on the building, you guys have done a fabulous job architecturally, you know, being innovative, breaking up the massing, you know, creating a great pedestrian experience. It feels like you ran out of gas when you got to the parking garage, and, and it's a very sort of traditional bandit span role with some, with some patterning in it. You know, I'm, I'm curious, and I'll, I'll ask both my questions, and then I'll let you guys respond. Curious what other things, if any, were considered to, to, you know, screen the parking garage in perhaps a different way and make it less of the sort of linear, traditional parking configuration. And on that same token, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the screening for the transformer pad and the gas storage yard that's also right on Bank Street. You know, it's going to be very, fairly close to the pedestrians. So screening around the parking and the gas and utilities, they are really, frankly, the only thing out of the whole presentation that I saw raise questions.
So the garage is fairly large. Here's a view of it. There is no sidewalk along it. It has a perimeter of landscaping and trees. The sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street. And so the visitor's center and the lobby facing the quad, it was given quite a bit of architectural analysis. The architectural asymmetrical staircase was given a lot of consideration, something that had punched, that would change the feeling of Bank Street. This facade, at each of those entrances, there are three tall banners at each entrance. So there's six banners. So at each parking entrance, there will be three perpendicular banners, and they will promote science and things like that in these banners, so that you know you're coming on the campus, and, and there's communication about the innovative work that's being done there. So other than the softening of the tops with the planting, the planting at the base, and then capping either end with architectural, in order to get this large of a garage in in the smallest amount of space, you know, so that it doesn't overwhelm the campus, that's what this is. I will show you, this is the side of the garage. This is the side of the garage between the north building and the garage. And you can see the elevation above Bank Street. On the left is Bank Street and the loading dock. And then you can see that the campus is at a higher level. So this is, you know, the childcare center has a play area up here above the loading dock. It's separated from Bank Street. But you can also see that there is like a grayed out area in the middle here. That is some screening, which is these metal panels, but they have a wood look and they have texture and they have movement, et cetera, so that there's some additional screening from the office building, which is so close.
Have you looked at views from, you know, what the views are today and will be from Quince Orchard Drive as you're driving past the site? Because right now, you've got the 700 Quince Orchard building that's, you know, one corner. You've got this entire, you know, basically two blocks in the back. You've got a little tiny bank that sits right there. As you're driving up Quince Orchard, I would imagine you'll see that gorgeous stair tower, but I would imagine you're going to see a whole lot of that corner and this, this parking facade that's on the street. I don't know, and I'm saying that just based on memory of driving there. Has that been looked at, you know, what that perception's going to be?
So again, Manoj Delia, I'm the architect with KGD Architecture. So I wanted to, yes, we have looked at it and we purposefully, so I want to kind of describe this experience on the corner. So as my cursor moves, the side of the garage facing Bank Street, there's actually face, there's, there's the brick and you can see the glass, the, the green panels that are, that are embedded there. So, so that corner, that treatment of that spandrel is different.
Okay.
All right? And, and it's the same thing on from the other side. Until you reach the entrance where Nancy described the banners, the vertical banners, so there's a little bit of that. But also that itself, that band of 30 feet wide is, is a different treatment of the garage. And so you can see that portal, that's sort of a portal that's breaking it down and then at the upper end of it too. So then, then we are faced with the middle expanse, which, which has the minimalistic idea of this, this barrier and it's got the vertical pieces and reveals and the DNA pattern. So we're imagining this and we've looked at it fairly deeply on what, do you, do you make it bigger or do you, do you kind of work on the horizontal aspect of it and make it hover somewhat, somewhat flat? And in front of it, we deliberately, in the site planning process and the land process, we, we put these trees up there that are, that we're relying on those trees to take that middle expanse and act as a screening element. And then of course, the sort of the sacrifice up on top, which is the deliberate loss of the perpendicular parking to create a fairly robust edge planter. So when, when we, when we drive that, that journey that you're talking about, you should really be seeing the trees and the top and sort of the cascading planter look. And that's what we're focused on.
Yeah, so one, if I, Bank Street, there is a three-story office building and just the small little M&amp;T bank. But the sketch plan actually gives them like 200,000 square feet, which eventually they could redevelop, you know, assemble and redevelop into something more robust on that corner. When that might happen, I don't know, you know. But hopefully we did the best we could with trying to get the parking in the narrowest, smallest space to have the least impact on Bank Street.
I don't think it's a massing issue at all. I think the, the massing is perfectly reasonable. I think, you know, seeing that wood screen, to me, to, to this architect's eye, the potential for screening is really what we talk about. And I, you know, what's presented here I don't think is unreasonable or not acceptable. It's always, it's always a cost benefit analysis and, you know, I think there's some, there are some more things you could do, but you know, I think it's, it's acceptable. How about the equipment yards?
Okay, so on Bank Street, I think maybe I can go back to the picture. And Manoj, you can talk about what these screens look like.
So the, so these are the compressed gases. There's an area well that drops down and, and then expresses itself. A little portion of it, maybe about eight or nine, 10 feet maybe, is screened. And the idea was to provide colored glass to, to expose a little bit through the colored glass, you might, you might see, if you light it, the infrastructure behind it. And it's somewhat seen as, as being honest with, with what, what the function of it is, but also interacting with the colored glass. So instead of saying that it's, it's a, something to hide, it's about celebrating the signs and showing it off.
It's going to be the little blow off of liquid oxygen or liquid nitrogen that those big things usually have.
Every once in a while, I guess.
It adds to the drama.
And, but, but the, I think for the, for the, you know, gas well, that makes sense. But the, the part that's closest to the pedestrians, if I'm understanding this right, are all the electrical transformers that sit in front. So as that guy's riding his bike and those people are walking back and forth to work, they're really walking past a, a bank of humming electrical transformers that you're seeing through colored glass and the gases are behind.
So the sides of it, I, the sides of the transformer area, the screen, is, resonates with the colored glass concept. But the front of it has the, the wood-like look to it. And so we're, and we're changing the angle of it and making it such that it's, you know, you're actually seeing the wood portion of it, which is much more pedestrian friendly. And then it's got facets on it.
Okay. I mean, I think on, on the, on the chemicals or gas storage, I kind of, the narrative about the colored glass and revealing sort of the cool equipment beyond, I think, I think is great. I'm a little skeptical of that on electrical transformers because there's, there's nothing magical and sexy about big green humming boxes. So, you know, I, I would encourage a little bit more look into, you know, how to screen those. I, I know out in suburbia, underground transformer vaults are like everybody's last resort, but look at an underground transformer vault. You know, again, pedestrian experience along this, this road and this, this sidewalk here. And for a bunch of people, it's going to be the gateway to a part of the campus. So I encourage a little bit more look at the transformer screen.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's come a long way from the previous presentation where we were really concerned about that blank wall, as I recall, and just having an opening where the trucks go in and out. So this is fantastic, and it's really a good innovation. I just want to make one quick point about the, the screening that you referred to in the buildings and that they're not generating electricity. But are those screens also cutting down on the sun so that it's a passive type of screen? Which is a really good innovation in itself. So if it's not generating electricity, at least it's cutting down on the amount of electricity. Just want to make that point.
Which is why the screens are on certain facades of the building and not like on the Bank Street facade because being the northern side, you want the glass to be open.
Right.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, Sam, do you want to read the recommendation and then we'll go to the public for any testimony?
Sure. So before I read the recommendation, just like to point out the staff analysis recommendation references Section 24-172A. What it should read is 24-171. So with that being said, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant SP-9290-2022 and ENV-9289-2022. Final plan approval finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and Sections 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with five conditions.
All right, and just for clarity, when we get to motions, we're looking for both of those in one motion or do we need to do separate motions for the ENV and the site plan?
It can be done in one motion. As long as it's clear, should be fine.
So before we get to our, our final discussion, I'd like to open it up to the public. I don't think there's anybody uninvolved with the applicant or the city here in person, but if there is anyone listening in via Zoom, raise your hand as, as we've mentioned in the video and Greg will see you pop up on his screen. Is there anybody?
Yep, we have one speaker, David Mullins.
All right, David, please take yourself off mute, state your name and address or neighborhood for the record and you can begin.
Yeah, no, thanks. I was just, you know, still here at the meeting and I am at the Gateway Apartments, at David Mullins at the Gateway Apartments at 935 Clopper, but right on First Field. So I thought I would chime in here with just a little context because, you know, as someone who drives down First Field quite a bit, this whole idea of like a transparent, like it sounded really cool to drive through and be able to see through and, and that, that, and I use that road a lot, and so I wanted to, I wanted to commend that. I did hear that, that there was the not adverse claim made. And I'm not, and so now I'm not an economist or a tax assessor of, you know, lands of any kind. But I just, you know, it sounded like you, you made it sound like you're joining some colleagues in the high tech world along that corridor. But you know, my, my son's pediatrician is right at 17 First Field or used to be. You know, Wu Wang Dental is also right there at 17 First Field. There's a church that I think occupies the lower level of one of the office buildings along there. If you go farther down, there's the postal office. And then at the end of the street is another church that's just an established church. And it just, it's a lot more public and community on that side than it, than it, than it sounded like in that presentation. So I'm just throwing that out there. And also I don't, you know, I was curious about the public engagement for the street names. I didn't catch any of that. But you know, this is, this, this, again, like, you know, I'm, you know, we welcome the, the positives of this coming in and everything. I do want to be clear about that and thanks for giving me the, the platform to, to talk. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
That is all.
All right. Discussion.
I think it's, sorry. Like I mentioned before, I think this is going to be best in class. I think you're, you've done an amazingly thoughtful, thorough presentation. And I'm, you know, for Speaker of the City, I'm just grateful that, that you're here. I also have attended the church that the gentleman on the phone mentions. And I don't, I see that as, this is a benefit to that area. And I also, I'm also very grateful that you're so thoughtful in terms of engaging your employees with, whether it's the naming, conventions for the streets, the childcare center, the visitor's center, the green space. I think it, it amplifies all the things that we were trying to do in the city, so.
I would echo what Sharon just said, and it's a 21st century building. And that's, that's the key here. We've had a lot of, a lot of 20th century buildings. And what you've done so far with the building on Quince Orchard Road is tremendous considering what it looked like before. So we applaud it, I applaud what you're doing and look forward to this really getting underway. Thank you.
I, first off, echo what both of my fellow commissioners have said. You know, I think it's a great addition to the community. I think you've done a fabulous job, design-wise. However, my wife tells me I have a disease where nothing's ever good enough and I'm never satisfied. So, so to that end, the fact that we're talking about LEED and sustainability and going above and beyond, you know, base green code compliance as something that we do later is, is a little bit disappointing. You know, putting that label on it after the base building has been designed never yields as good a result as it could if it started from the beginning. Your facade is set, your mechanical systems are set. Lights and views and things like that are set at this point. So, you know, there are, there could be in my mind opportunities to, to have pushed this farther from a sustainability standpoint. And so I'd just encourage you to, you know, be open to rethinking things as you go down that road. Because this campus has an opportunity, you know, it's already, it's already raising the bar in the city here. You guys have a really tremendous opportunity to set yourselves apart and take it the next 20% to be something that's not just a standout in the city, but is a standout in the region. So I, I would encourage you to reach for that.
Well stated.
Thank you.
So with that said, if there's no other questions or discussions, look for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings, recommendations, move that the planning commission grant SP-9290-2022 and ENV-9289-2022. Final plan approval finding in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city's zoning ordinance with the five conditions is read into the record.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? No, hearing none? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you very much and congratulations.
We appreciate it.
That takes us to from the commission. Sharon, just start with you.
I have nothing really to, to add other than this is a great night. Happy to be here.
Boyd, anything this evening?
The city, I think, has notified everybody that if you have leaves, put them out on the curb. They pick them up once a week through December now. The leaves are really falling down, so have the city take care of it and it's, it's a great service that they provide, so take advantage of it.
I will add that they did ours, I think, last week and they did a fantastic job.
Nothing from me this evening. Staff, Greg?
Just a couple of dates to remind you of. We have a couple of joint work sessions, joint public hearings on the schedule. November 7th is upcoming Monday, the joint public hearing on the One Central Avenue SDP, as well as two joint work sessions, which are actually being held during a regular session of the Mayor's City Council on the housing element. And those are scheduled for November 21st and December 5th. And then the next planning commission meeting is November 16th.
John, anything for you?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to add that, as Sharon said, this was a great night. And I think it's especially gratifying to see the second building at Washingtonian South move forward. I can recall 15 years ago, I was still on the city council and we were getting tremendous pressure then to convert that building to residential. And that has continued for the last 15 years. In the last 10 years, I've been in this position, at least three different proposals to convert that building to residential have come forward, not to you, but to staff. And to see that building move forward as a life science lab building is just, it's extraordinary. And also on top of that, NovaVAX, what was it, five years ago? The 700 Quince Orchard building was proposed to be self-storage. And, and now we have a best-in-class world headquarters going up there, so.
I believe we did an ordinance change to try to prevent that from occurring.
We did. It was an emergency and it got done. And as you recall, the planning commission made a recommendation and the council passed it the same night on the dais.
Yep.
So, and now we have a best-in-class world headquarters. So I think we all should be happy about this.
Yes.
And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Frank?
No, nothing more to add. Well, I guess I should say we did the open meetings training at the Planning Commissioners Association. And my understanding is that was very well received and saw everybody there at that time. So it looks like that's a very good annual addition.